Okay, we're going to get started. Good night, everyone. My name is Andrew Bing and I will be the facilitator for tonight's public hearing that the Maryland Department of the Environment, or MDE, will be conducting for the 401 Water Quality Certification, or WQC, for the Maglev project. On behalf of MDE, I welcome you. The purpose of this hearing is to provide members of the public the opportunity to present views, opinions, and information that will be considered by the MDE in evaluating the 401 WQC for the project. After we hear a brief presentation from MDE and from the applicant, BWRR, I will open the hearing up for public testimony. I will review the ground rules for the hearing after these presentations. I do want to remind everyone that as the hearing facilitator, I am responsible for running the hearing. I will now introduce the representative of MDE who is in attendance for this evening's hearing, Danielle Spendiff, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division of the Maryland Department of the Environment. At this time, I will turn the proceedings over to Danielle to provide her statement.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Maryland Department of the Environment's Public Informational Hearing for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007, submitted by Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail, or BWRR. My name is Danielle Spendiff, Chief of the Regulatory and Customer Service Division at the Maryland Department of the Environment, which I will refer to as MDE or the Department. I am the panelist representing the Department at this evening's Public Informational Hearing. Also in attendance with me from the Department is Heather Nelson, Program Manager for the Wetlands and Waterways Protection Program. I would like to thank everyone for taking time to participate in the public process and the Ironworkers Local 5 for providing the hearing location. At this time, I would like to acknowledge any elected officials or their representatives who may be present here this evening. If you are an elected official or representing an elected official, please raise your hand now to be recognized.
He's planning on speaking.
Okay. All right, thank you. It is the responsibility of the Department to evaluate requests for water quality certifications, or WQC's, under Section 401 of the Clean Water Act, which requires Maryland as the certifying authority to determine whether the discharge associated with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, known as the CORN, Permit Application, NAB 2016-01622, complies with the state's water quality standards. The Department's authority is found in Subtitle IX of the Environment article. Each certification request received through a regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered with regard to Maryland's water quality standards. The Department is neither a proponent nor an opponent of any project. The Department is conducting this evening's Public Informational Hearing pursuant to Code of Maryland Regulations, or COMAR 26.08.02.10-F2. The purpose of this Public Informational Hearing is for the applicant to present an analysis of impacts that may be associated with the proposed activity. From the hearing participants, the Department is seeking your perspectives, views, and concerns about the project, specifically as they relate to the water quality certification request. Although we will not be responding to questions this evening, your public input is essential to making well-informed and thoughtful decisions. I would like to emphasize that the purpose of this Public Informational Hearing is to consider only the WQC request pending before the Department. There may be concerns related to issues that are beyond the scope of this certification request and hearing. We would like for the hearing to remain focused on the WQC decision and related concerns. It is not necessary to read a statement to make it part of the official record. Written comments will also be accepted and received the same consideration as any oral statement. In fact, for accuracy, if you have a letter to read into the record, I suggest you also provide us with a copy of the letter when you finish. This Public Informational Hearing is for Water Quality Certification Request Number 23-WQC-0007, submitted by BWRR and received by the Department on February 7, 2023, for a dedicated alignment and structures for a high-speed, superconducting magnetic levitation, or SC Maglev, transportation system between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, Maryland, with an intermediate stop at BWI Airport. The SC Maglev alignment consists of both below-ground and elevated rail on viaduct. This hearing record will remain open for two weeks after the final hearing until 11:59 p.m. on Thursday, November 2, 2023. The comments received during the public comment period will become part of the project file and will be considered by the Department when rendering a decision on this certification request. The Department is obligated to issue, with or without conditions, deny, or waive certification of this project prior to expiration of the reasonable period of time as determined by the CORN, which is February 7, 2024. The Department's decision and accompanying information will be sent to the Interested Persons List, the applicant, and the CORN and will be published in the Maryland Register. Any person who is aggrieved by the Department's decision may appeal by filing a request within 30 days of publication of the WQC decision in accordance with COMAR 26.08.02.10-F4. Please contact me directly if you would like to be added to the Interested Persons List. I will now turn the proceedings over to the applicant to provide a brief presentation on their proposed project.
Thank you very much, Danielle. My name is Ian Rainey. I'm Senior Vice President with Baltimore... Oh, excuse me. There we go. Whoops. Sorry about that. Thank you and good evening. My name is Ian Rainey. I'm Senior Vice President with Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail, or BWRR for short. BWRR is the developer of the SC Maglev project between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore, and we're also the applicant for this water quality certification. I'll provide a very quick overview of our project as part of this public hearing, and we also have some posters out there. If you haven't had a chance, take a look at those that provide some additional details. To begin with, I'd like to just articulate our company's long-term vision. What we are proposing to do is to bring the fastest train in the world, the superconducting Maglev, to connect Washington, D.C. to New York. And at the speed of this train, which is 311 miles per hour, that will facilitate a one-hour travel time between Washington, D.C. and New York, and an approximately 15-minute travel time between Washington, D.C. and Baltimore. And just to avoid any confusion, I would like to note that the WQC application that's been submitted is not for the entire corridor. It's limited specifically to the Washington, D.C. to Baltimore segment of this overall This map shows the alignment and the stations and facilities that were submitted as part of the WQC application. It may be a little bit difficult to see, but following from left to right, we have the station in Washington, D.C., which is a below-ground station underneath New York Avenue. We proceed out of the district in deep tunnel before daylighting in the vicinity of Greenbelt. So the magenta-colored alignment is the deep tunnel alignment, and the green-colored alignment is the above-ground alignment. Approximately three-quarters of this project is below ground. That was a decision that was made very early on in the design process in order to mitigate I'd like to just emphasize BWRR is firmly committed to following federal and state stormwater management guidelines. We're fully committed to complying with all MDE regulations for stormwater quality and quantity treatment. We'll implement environmental site design, ESD, to the maximum extent practicable, and we'll also implement erosion and sediment control measures in accordance with MDE practices and timeframes. Again, I apologize. It may be a little bit difficult to see these, but again, the information I'm presenting is in the WQC. Please do take a look at it if you're having trouble seeing what's up here. But what I would point out here is that the top table shows the permanent and temporary proposed impacts to wetlands and waterways. And of those, the proposed impacts to non-title wetlands of special concern are shown in the Now regarding Tier 2 impacts, the project will traverse the Patuxet River 1 and Beaver Dam Creek 2 Tier 2 watersheds. BWRR does plan to maintain, of course, the condition of waters in those watersheds by avoiding or minimizing impacts, and where impacts can't be avoided, will provide adequate mitigations. And just to reiterate a point I made in the earlier slide from the very first day, we've tried to design this project as much as possible to avoid impacts. Some examples of that are, as I mentioned before, most of the alignment is sited in deep tunnel. We also tried to redo... Excuse me, reduce the size of the train set maintenance facility as much as possible and to locate other facilities in areas that would be the least disruptive to communities and the environment. We believe there is sufficient opportunity for mitigation in the Patuxet River 1 watershed through reforestation techniques. In Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed, there are limited opportunities for mitigation, however, there is assimilative capacity. And as noted in the WQC application, BWRR has located more mitigation than required in the Patuxet River 1 watershed, and we've provided what we think is a very compelling social and economic justification for those impacts to the Beaver Dam Creek 2 watershed I'd like to conclude by highlighting some of the benefits of the project that are noted in the WQC. These include reduced emissions that will result in better air quality, significant job creation, and of course, transportation improvements without the need to displace any residential communities. And again, these are articulated in much greater detail in the WQC application itself. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you to MDE, and I'll turn it back to Danielle. Andrew.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Thank you, Danielle. So there are multiple ways to comment on the WQC. You can provide oral testimony at this public hearing or send an email or written letter to MDE, Wetlands and Waterways Program. Details on ways to comment can be found on the screen that you're looking at right now. All comments received, whether at the hearing through oral testimony or through other methods, will be given equal consideration, and comments must be received before 11:59 p.m. on Thursday, November 2, 2023. Today's public hearing is being audio recorded. The official transcript of the public hearing testimony will become part of the project record and will be available for public review on the MDE's project website. Agency representatives and I will be listening to all testimony and will not be answering questions or responding to any comments made during the hearing. Again, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow interested parties to provide comments on the WQC. My role as the hearing facilitator is to run a professional and orderly public hearing. I understand how important the issues are related to the WQC, and I take my role as hearing facilitator seriously. I am committed to providing members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in an organized, fair, professional, and orderly manner. We look forward to hearing your perspectives on the proposed project, but please be courteous of all speakers and understand that offensive or profane language will not be allowed. The panelist is interested in hearing comments about the WQC from all interested individuals. Again, neither I nor the panelists will respond to any questions or comments. We are here to listen. Please remember that we are recording this hearing. Speak directly and clearly into the microphone and provide your full name, address, and any organization you may be representing. To ensure all will be heard, there will be a three-minute time limit for public testimony and a five-minute time limit for elected officials or group representatives. The time will start after you introduce yourself. I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining so you can begin to wrap up your testimony. As the hearing moderator, if you are unable to conclude your comments at the end of your time period, I will end your testimony and move on to the next person in the queue. At this time, I will call on the first person to provide comments. We will begin with comments from elected officials and then move on to comments from the public. So thank you to everyone for my introductory comments and for the representative from MDE and BWRR, and now we're going to move on to comments. So I'm going to call our first person up. That will be Joe Gaskins, who is, it says here, PG Contractors and Business Association. So Mr. Gaskins, if you would first, just state your name, spell your name, state the organization you're representing, and an address, please.
My name is Joseph Gaskins. It's J-O-S-E-P-H-G-A-S-K-I-N-S, and the organization is the Prince George County Contractors and Business Association.
And an address, please.
It's located at 6710 Oxon Hill Road, and that's Oxon Hill, Maryland, 20745.
Great. Go ahead.
This is my pleasure to come before the hearing today to support Maglev's efforts in delivering a quality system and to also go on testimony to say that we're 100% in support of this project due to the projected jobs that's going to be provided, number one, and also the minority business component of it, which is slated to be 25%, provided that there is none. Clear bill from MDE, we are 100% in support of the project moving forward. Now, I'm also here as well to, on behalf of Senator C. Anthony Muse, that will be a written submission from him, but I will say this, because he's not able to be here because he had constituent meeting this afternoon, he is 100% supporting Maglev's efforts. As a senator from the Legislative District 26, which is located headquartered in National Harbor, Maryland. I don't have his address, but you do have his address in Annapolis, and that will conclude my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaskins. We're next going to go to Patricia Jackman, who is with the Maryland Coalition for Responsible Transit, MCRT. Ms. Jackman, as you come up, again, if you would state your name and spell your name, provide who you're representing, and then an address, please.
Okay. I'm Patricia Jackman, J-A-C-K-M-A-N, and I represent Maryland Coalition for Responsible Transit. That's at 5813 Lamont Drive, New Carrollton, Maryland.
Great, go ahead.
Okay. The MCRT is organized for the purpose of encouraging public participation in the development of current and future transit proposals by ensuring they are evaluated for economic viability, social and environmental impacts, and community accessibility. The MCRT feels the MDE should deny the Baltimore-Washington Rapid Rail Water Quality Certification application for the following reasons. First and foremost, our concerns regarding the elements of the SC Maglev's draft environmental impact statement have not been addressed. The MCRT submitted 365-plus pages of comments and questions regarding the DEIS in May of 2021, along with local governments, environmental organizations, and individuals who oppose the project. The Federal Railroad Administration's Maglev DEIS review process has been paused for over two years. We have not received responses to our detailed questions. We have not received a supplemental DEIS with the opportunity for public comment and review. How can the MDE make such a critical decision on the contents of this water quality certification application when the project still has not addressed the problematic issues that were raised? I remind MDE of only a few of a myriad of unresolved issues. Financial stability depends on ridership. In the WQC documents, BWRR is clear that the financial success of operating and maintaining the SC Maglev is based on ridership. MCRT has been trying for three years, and BWRR still has not provided a fully unredacted data with ridership analysis to validate that the SC Maglev project is financially feasible and able to generate the sufficient revenue to be self-sustainable and cover the costs of the system's operations. The MDE and we, the communities through which this SC Maglev will build and operate, should see clear evidence that the BWR's ridership projections are not grossly inflated. Job claims. In 2017, BWRR stated that the Maglev would create 74,000 job years. In 2021, the DEIS, BWRR estimated 161,000 and 195,000 job years. More recently, that number went to 205,000 job years. Remarkably nonetheless, the projected cost estimate has barely changed. BWR is confusing the public since the job years are not the same as actual jobs. Where are the analyses to show this? BWRR's WQC application and related reports do not demonstrate the level of specificity and accuracy required by the MDE to grant the certification. There are several flaws in the application. I mention only a few. The lack of specificity regarding stormwater treatments, the use of aquatic life data that is nearly 20 years old, and the reporting of different impacted Tier 2 waterways than what MDE has shown. Details regarding the practices used for reforestation and stormwater mitigations are vague and lack comprehensive descriptions. Safety. The SC Maglev train design will prevent... present safety problems, including the potential for accidents due to the lack of detailed and appropriate safety regulations for this technology. The technology is not in commercial operation anywhere in the world. Rather, it is being tested in one location in Japan. The required SC Maglev safety certification, known as the Rules of Particular Applicability, is not planned for completion until after construction starts. This is contrary to the Federal Department of Transportation's policy, which states that safety should be a priority. For these important reasons, the MDE should deny the BWRR this essential certification. Thank you.
Thank you, and I saw you were reading off of notes. If you want to submit that...
I will. I have a copy over here for you.
Great. Okay, we're going to go to our next speaker. I do want to point out before I call her up, if anyone here does want to provide public testimony at our sign-in table, you can go out there and let the woman out there know that you'd like to provide testimony. She'll provide me a card, and then I'll call you up here. So I see there's a bunch of people here. That's the process by which you'll go and sign up. But we are going to go to our next person, who is Lisa Ellis. Lisa, if you'd come up. You'll have three minutes, Lisa, as a member of the public, and if you could just state your name, spell your name, and your address, please.
Lisa Ellis, L-I-S-A-E-L-L-I-S. Address is 6710 Oxon Hill Road, Suite 210, Oxon Hill, Maryland, 20745.
Great, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm representing the Maryland Business Clergy Partnership, and I am an activist as well as a business owner. I wanted to speak specifically to the safety issue, piggybacking off of that. Five years ago, I lost a relative on 295 due to a major car accident as they was traveling from Baltimore, Washington to D.C. That fatal car accident, to me personally, could have been prevented had we had safer ways to travel. I believe the Maglev project will provide a safer way to travel, taking less traffic off the roads, making sure that we have a way to increase air quality, job security. We're in an economic downturn right now where people can't afford to buy houses. The cost of homes are going up, yet folks are not able to have access. This particular project will help to bring jobs, high-paying jobs, to the community, give individuals the capacity to be able to afford to live in this region. More importantly, as a business owner, I believe that MBE firms will have the capacity and opportunity to participate on this project, which in this area, most of them are being locked out. So I support this project. The over 300 businesses that are members of the Maryland Business Clergy support this project, and the business owners that are connected to us in networking and activists support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, at this point, I do not have anyone else who's indicated that they want to provide public testimony, so I will just go and look around the room, and if there is someone who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to provide testimony, I would just ask you to come up to the microphone and state your name and spell your name. So I'll give it a couple seconds to see if anyone would like to do that. Okay. I don't see anyone who's coming up right now, which is fine. What we're going to do right now, right now it is 7:26, we're going to go into recess. The hearing will continue, but we'll be in recess, and I'll come back periodically and provide an update. And if anyone does indicate that they want to provide testimony, we will come back right away and provide that. So if I don't have anyone who's going to come to speak, I'll come back with an update at 7:40. And again, if someone does indicate their desire to testify, we will come right back and take that person's testimony. So right now, again, it is 7:26, and we are in recess.
Okay, right now it is 7:40 PM. No one else has shown up to provide any testimony. So we are going to stay in recess. We are going to stay until eight o'clock. And if anyone obviously shows up between now and eight o'clock, we will take their testimony. At eight o'clock, I've spoken to the Maryland Department of the Environment representatives, and they have said that we will end this hearing at eight o'clock. And again, we have 20 minutes for anyone who wants to provide testimony, anyone who's here who wants to provide testimony, or anyone who is going to be showing up. So I'll come back on at eight o'clock and give everyone an update. And of course, we'll come back sooner if anyone shows up who wants to provide testimony. So right now, it is 7:40, and we will remain in recess. And we still do not have anyone else who has arrived who would like to provide testimony. As everyone who here, I think, knows, we had three people provide testimony. And after that, we provided time for anyone else to arrive and provide testimony. Over 30 minutes, and now it is eight o'clock, and we haven't had anyone show up. So we are going to close out the hearing. I do want to let everyone know that there are two other in-person hearings, as well as a virtual hearing. So there still are opportunities to provide testimony on this water quality certification hearing. I also want to remind people that the comment period, you can provide comments either at a public hearing, or through email, or through mail. And the comment period will remain open till 11:59 PM on Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. So at this time, we're going to close out the hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Danielle to officially close the hearing for tonight.
On behalf of the Maryland Department of the Environment, your interest in this project and attendance at this evening's hearing is appreciated. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you all for attending, and have a good evening.